I'll call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Yes, Supervisors Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
McGlashan?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item number 32 is the Greenback Lane Special Planning Area Project. It's a request for a zoning ordinance amendment to update the Greenback Lane Special Planning Area for the creation of a downtown Orangeville business district area on Greenback Lane and the adoption of the Downtown Orangeville Commercial Design Guidelines and Streetscape Master Plan within the Orangeville community. The environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay, and our presenter this morning?
Hi, I'm Carrie Blaskowski. I'm from the Planning and Environmental Review Division of Community Development. I'm pleased to be here today to request your recommendation for adoption of the amendment to the Greenback Lane Special Planning Area. We have a two-fold presentation today. One is actually talking about the SPA and the attached commercial design guidelines, and then we'll have a presentation by the Department of Transportation to discuss the Streetscape Master Plan. So, oops, let me get...there we go. What you see up here is a regional context for the actual project, the area in red on the map. And what we have on this map is the area in orange indicates the area we're calling Downtown Orangeville, and that is the actual area that we're recommending to amend, the Greenback Lane SPA, to amend that portion. So this project is unique in several ways. One, it's a community-led endeavor with the support of Sacramento County. A lot of work was put in by a devoted group of volunteers, and I would like to actually mention just a few of them. One is Catherine Leonard, the Chair of Greenback Lane Invisions Group. We have Joe Ellering, who was the Chair of the SPA Update Subcommittee, and Ralph Carhart, who was the Chair of the Streetscape Master Plan. So this area is a portion of Greenback that was pretty much fully developed during the '50s and '60s when Aerojet came to the region, and these businesses kind of came about hodgepodge to support Aerojet. This area would have difficulty improving because it's mostly established with small businesses and could not meet the current SPA standards of a 50-foot landscaped set-back and bifurcated meandering sidewalks. This area would never develop if we required that. Also, in the middle of the process and putting together our design guidelines, our Sacramento County Development Code and the commercial design guidelines were adopted. Therefore, we reduced our commercial guidelines, and where the code does not address what we are proposing, our attached design guidelines address it. So in 2007, there was a Greenback Lane Economic Development Study. It was in response to a survey from 600 Orangeville residents, and they set the following goals for this area. They wanted to create an identity, gathering places, beautify the area, have it more safe and pedestrian-friendly. And as part of that process, they asked that a committee be established to implement these goals. So in 2008, with the support of the community, a vision was acknowledged and received by the Board of Supervisors, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, in 2011, a vision was acknowledged and received by the Board of Supervisors with the support of the community. So next, we have a list of stakeholders and glove members. And this next map actually shows the vision area. As noted before in the prior map, the portion of Greenback Lane that's going to be identified as Downtown Orangeville is only on Greenback, but the vision area actually encompassed a little more area, and it goes north and south on Main Avenue, and takes into consideration a little bit more of the community. So we have some project objectives: to create a business district with an identity, attract investment, and support the existing businesses, beautify this portion of Greenback Lane, and make it safe. Consistent with the community goals, the amendment proposes to define the boundaries for Orangeville, identify prohibited uses, address landscaping in the form of palm trees for identifiers and shade trees, allow for special signage, discusses architectural themes, and also discusses the project review process. So the details for this SPA, initially what we did was we updated the 1989 SPA to address the refined design review process so that some projects do not have to go through the more restrictive development plan review. That's SPA-wide. We established the Orangeville downtown area, and we talked about the mutual cooperation zones. Those are the areas outside of the SPA but that are in the vision area. They are areas of influence that support the intent of the vision. So that's the colored areas on this map. The gold area is the actual SPA itself. So we encourage these mutual cooperation zones to use the more flexible Orangeville development standards. So here's some examples of the architectural themes, keeping in mind that they came about with these concepts because of the Aerojet era in the '50s and '60s. So we have town and country, California Rancho, and mid-century modern. Whoops, there you go. I'm not used to pushing these buttons. So this next slide shows the kind of art and context that we would like to use for the signage, neon or neon-like, and the wider sidewalks with outdoor seating, and the palm trees and shade trees. So next, we have our streetscape.
Thank you, Carrie. Good morning. My name is Heather Yee, and I am a civil engineer with the County of Sacramento, and I will be introducing our Streetscape Master Plan this morning. The Streetscape Master Plan will be an appendix to the SPA, and the goal of a Streetscape Master Plan provides guidelines for the design of the required streetscape features within the public right-of-way. Items outside of the public right-of-way are taken care of with the SPA that you've just heard about. A Streetscape Master Plan can do a number of things. For example, create a shared vision of the business district, facilitate future funding opportunities, clarify priorities for the business district, allow phased improvements to contribute toward a larger objective, provide guidance while allowing future refinement of specific street design elements, and kick-start the corridor and move in the direction of the SPA amendment vision. As Carrie mentioned, this was a community-led process, and goals were developed with a Streetscape task force. The Streetscape Master Plan goals primarily focused on making Greenback Lane, this downtown Orangeville area, a multimodal corridor and a destination where people would feel comfortable doing more than one errand. The task force concentrated on strengthening the economic vitality of the business district by enhancing pedestrian connections and walkability, bicycle infrastructure, landscape and other streetscape components, aesthetics and functions of the street, vehicular access and parking for the district, and a sense of place and destination identity. Now let's take a look at how we apply these items. So this is a current cross-section of downtown Orangeville. This is on Greenback Lane from Main Avenue facing towards the city of Folsom, towards Madison Avenue. So how can we make this a more inviting space? As you can see, there's no sidewalk, so there's no defined space for someone to walk. You can either take your chances with one huge driveway there on the right, or walk on the north side, which is on the left, in the dirt. To a pedestrian, this is one big conflict zone, and you're constantly looking over your shoulder to see if a car is coming. A bike lane, we'd like this to be a multimodal facility. Currently, you can ride with traffic, but there is no defined space, so it's not quite comfortable. Shade, on a summer day, there's just nowhere where you want to be. With all the black pavement, the heat is reflected back onto you, and it's very hot and uncomfortable for the pedestrian. For our vehicular driver, there's nothing much to look at, so the tendency is to just drive faster. Aesthetics, there's a lot of overhead lines, and these are unsightly. A lot of people don't really like to look at these all the time. And lastly, where are we? Community identification. This was definitely a priority with the task force because there's no consistent message through the corridor, and we wanted to define Orangeville and take some pride in our community.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before she leaves that slide, if you can go back, please.
Sure.
I note that on the south side, on the right side of the slide there, the south side of Greenback looking east, looks like you have utility standards poles that seem to be at least 20, 25 feet off of the pavement, which seems a little unusual. I mean, if you look at maybe a more modern streetscape, contemporary streetscape, there's much more symmetry to it, meaning the travel lanes kind of go down the middle, and you have about the same amount of distance from pavement or back a curb to where a utility easement might lie. So I'm just curious, on that south side, how much room is there to work with, given the fact that it appears you have utility easements that are at some distance from the edge of pavement there?
Are you curious about that specific pole that is a distance from the roadway?
Yeah, I'm looking at that pole, but if you look further east, you see another pole there. I assume that's a pole. Or is it a meandering utility easement? It's very odd. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. There are not specific utility easements on this roadway because it's of the date of the roadway. So they're working with the roadway with our street roadway easement. So that specific pole is actually serving, I believe it's serving a business.
A specific property.
Did you want to?
If I could, my name is Ron Bicari. I'm a principal civil engineer with the Department of Transportation. There is a lot of poles that are in random locations. The particular pole you're looking at, I believe, does service that business alone, but they are in multiple locations. One of the elements that came from this master plan is to look at undergrounding utilities because not only, from an aesthetic perspective, will it improve the corridor by doing so, but it'll also allow us to get sidewalks as well as bicycle lanes and be able to make a consistent look. So hopefully, there's some utilities out there. They're called 69 KV, the major power lines, that may not be able to go underground, but the majority of these poles will no longer be seen.
Is the majority 12 KV?
There's both.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just to weigh in, but you know, looking at this view, which doesn't take in the entirety of the area, but this is nearly as cluttered from a viewshed standpoint as some of the areas. I mean, when you look at the utilities, not nearly. I mean, if you're going to start someplace, this actually has a better start than a lot of our corridors. It relates to the overheads and all the lines and so forth. I mean, you've got a lot on that north side, but you look at that south side, that's pretty devoid, except for where they're coming across for the drops for the buildings and maybe some other locations. I mean, just looking at this picture that you have up here, so it looks to me like you've got a better start on this for a variety of factors, some of it just being old. But I just, when I think about some of the other corridors and, you know, just the mishmash of lines that crisscross streets and, you know, intersections and, you know, back and forth across the streets, this actually is a pretty good place to start from, I would imagine.
So we have a plus. We're starting in a good place, okay.
Got to get rid of the rest of them, but I'm just saying. The challenge may not be as big, so.
Thank you. So eventually, so this is a computer rendering of the downtown Orangeville vision. And eventually, the goals of smart growth streets and the SPA is for new businesses to build on-street, and the vehicular parking and the circulation to be amongst the businesses off of the main street, which would be Greenback Lane. And a glove member once said that the area should feel like a promenade for pedestrians to walk about and for travelers in vehicles to notice the storefronts. The sidewalk will be a gathering place with wide sidewalks for people to gather, talk, and congregate. The storefronts will be adjacent for the street-side dining and easily viewable shops. There are pedestrian plazas that are signified by, or framed by, palm trees that serve as viewports from the roadway but also invite people to enter from the sidewalk area. Palm trees once played a role as entry points to people's farms. So here, palm trees are used in the streetscape as entry points, like in the plazas, and at intersections to signify a business intersection. There is a landscape buffer to provide greenery and also some distance from quick-moving traffic, and most importantly, there are shade trees for a walkable environment. There will be a designated space for cyclists with bike lanes and designated spaces for vehicles to make left-hand turns. If you notice, there are not many driveways here. Pedestrian mobility and safety is a balance of vehicles moving through the space, and our goal is to consolidate driveways as the corridor develops. And lastly, the area feels more open because the overhead utilities have been removed. This is a proposed cross-section, and it is a cross-section that's very similar to the Sacramento County Improvement Standard. There are a few differences to better accommodate the downtown Orangeville community. First, in an effort to conserve right-of-way, the landscape buffer has been reduced by two feet, and the Streetscape Master Plan recognizes the community wants to underground utilities. However, a public use and facility easement is not defined within this cross-section. Rather, the additional right-of-way will be negotiated on an as-needed basis. Lastly, the concept of a landscape partial median was better developed to accommodate business properties concerned with access. The last component we're going to talk about is community identification, and one way to establish a go-to downtown is to clearly define where it is. Using a combination of branding and signage, identification tools are placed within the area to demarcate the boundaries and to establish a connection with the traveler. These tools include physical placement of signs, monument walls, art, and signature trees. The map here shows where these identifiers could occur within the downtown Orangeville area. As one enters the area from the east or the west, the teal diamonds on Greenback Lane represent the primary gateways, and there will be some signature signage in the median. Teal diamonds with X's are on the north and south side of Main Avenue, and these will be directional signage, which will inform people of the downtown Orangeville businesses and bring them to the downtown Orangeville corridor, and we are calling these secondary gateways. To let everyone know that you have arrived in downtown Orangeville, there will be a downtown monument in a central location, demarcated by the purple asterisk in the map. This will be a 30-foot piece of art with a clear message of downtown Orangeville. And to repeat this downtown Orangeville theme at the intersection plazas, there will be intersection plaza identifiers that will be at every major intersection corner throughout the corridor, and that is those orange circles at the major intersections. And so those will be more grounded in scale for pedestrians but also for the passing vehicles. So these identifiers are intended to provide a subtle yet bold statement that you are in a distinct area, the downtown Orangeville, and they have scale and unique design for downtown Orangeville. When combined with the streetscape components and the architecture of the surrounding buildings, the identifiers help set the character of downtown Orangeville. They are designed with lighting so they can provide both day and nighttime identity. The staff recommendation today is to approve a zoning ordinance amendment to the Greenback Lane Special Planning Area and approve the downtown Orangeville Commercial Design Guidelines and the Streetscape Master Plan as appendices to the Greenback Lane Special Planning Area. Attachment four of the board item is the Streetscape Master Plan, and there is a typo on page 21 that will be corrected. Previous presentations included a presentation to the Orangeville CPAC, which met on October 6, 2015, and had a recommended approval, five to one, with one absent of the proposed project. The Planning Commission report stated that there was one abstention, but this is correct, showing one absence. And the Sacramento County Planning Commission met on December 14, 2015, and recommended approval five to zero. With that, we are available, staff is available for questions and public comment.
I'd like to ask Carrie if she could come back to the podium. I have a few questions. Thank you. I wanted to ask you a little more about the whole glove process that led to this item coming to the Board of Supervisors today. Starting with, could you just estimate how many years this process, how long this process has been ongoing? How many, just, it would have to be an estimate at this point, about how many meetings of various types have been held over that period? What kind of public outreach has been done?
The actual process started in 2005 with an economic development study, and that's where the community set the goals, and that's where we went back to establishing an identity for the area and gathering places, et cetera. From that 2005 economic development study, they requested that a group be formed to implement their requests, and so that's how glove was formed. And actually, you, Roberta, had asked Catherine Leonard to be the chair to start this out. She has been so devoted and continued to, in a very calm manner, keep us moving. But through the process, we have had three business walks, one informal and one supported by the community, and then one through the Metro Chamber. We have had several presentations to groups such as the Orangeville Chamber. We've kept people on board all along. We've presented to the Rotary, to the Grange, to the Orangeville Recreation and Park District. We've kept everyone informed. Actually, we had several presentations through the years to the CPAC just informally to let them know what we were talking about and what was going on. In the past three years, we actually had a business event where we were, when we were proposing the vision before we came to the Board of Supervisors, and had total buy-in by the businesses at that time. It was a night meeting, so a lot of businesses could attend, and property owners. We also had two large community meetings to discuss the actual SPA and the streetscape. One was in March of 15, I think, and then one was this fall recently where we actually split the meeting. We had held two of them, one in the afternoon and one in the evening, so that we could ensure that everyone could attend that wanted to.
And I know that glove is an informal association, so it doesn't have like a membership roster and cards and that, but can you estimate how many people, how many businesses owners have been involved in this effort, and was anyone allowed to participate?
Any and everyone was allowed to attend or participate. We have a distribution list of everyone who signed up to be part of glove, of a little over 100 people, and that includes business owners, property owners, and community members that are interested in getting minutes of meetings, announcements of when meetings are being held. Anything that we do, we let them know. We send out the website so they can see the updated materials, things like that.
And then, when this item went to the CPAC and then, most recently, to the last month, to the Planning Commission, was there any opposition to the?
There was. At the CPAC, they, the approval, it was recommended approval. There was, at the CPAC, they, the approval, it was recommended approval, five to one, one person was absent. The recommendation was that we consider talking with the businesses on where driveway consolidation would occur. That was the primary issue. And also where medians would occur so that they didn't impact businesses, but that would be aligned with where consolidation would be for the driveways. There was one recommended denial, and to the best of my recollection, that was because there was concern that we were showing in our master plan what it would look like in the future if the project was fully developed and not really addressing how it affected, how it would look like today if we put these standards into existing businesses.
But other than one CPAC member, there were not people in attendance at either meeting who oppose, in opposition?
The, to my recollection, the primary issue was they wanted more money being spent in Orangevale. And people brought that item up. But as far as opposition to this project, no. At the Planning Commission, we had members in support, and there was one concern about lack of flexibility possibly in the Streetscape, addressing the two-way left-turn lanes. And so the Department of Transportation added more flexible language, which is in the strike-through version that you have today.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Is there anyone, any other board member who has questions of staff at this point? Or comments?
I have comments, but I'll wait till after the public speakers.
Okay, thank you. Then we will go on to public testimony, and the first person signed up to speak is Mark Ferreira.
Hi.
Mike.
Thanks for everybody's time. First of all, there's a lot of work on everybody's behalf, and I'm sure everybody's got their concerns for one way or another, how this thing presides and moves forward. I think one of, I own two pieces of property on Greenback there, and I've been involved with a piece that I own on Fulton Avenue for this whole beautification and landscape and all the hoopla that goes on with it. Some of my biggest concerns is downtown Orangevale. Orangevale's a rural community where my business started there in '81. Just a little muffler shop that employs six families. Simple auto repair. That's all, Orangevale's just a close-knit little community. We're not a downtown community. We don't have a big farmer's market. We're not cosmopolitan. We're not commercial America. We don't want Bed Bath &amp; Beyond right down the street. We're not that type of person. I don't speak for everybody, I'm sure, but that's one of the attractions to Orangevale. Orangevale, we don't want it to be a boilerplate, cookie cutter, Natomas area look-alike. And no disrespect to Natomas or what they're doing in Citrus Heights or Roseville. It's beautiful. I live in Roseville. But I just don't want a concrete jungle. I don't want Orangevale to look just like Citrus Heights, like Yelk Grove, the same boilerplate stuff. I don't agree with the restrictions on a lot of the businesses, you know? Why? Why? You know, I understand there shouldn't be a strip club by a school. I understand that. But I think some of the, some of the requirements are a little tough. I don't think it encourages a lot of growth. It's just my two cents.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Lorraine Silveira.
Hello, thank you. I am the Chair of the Orangeville CPAC. I am the one who actually voted no on this project, just to bring that out to everybody. I don't agree with downtown Orangevale. I agree with everything that Mark just said, so I'm not going to go back into that and waste your time. There were several people at the CPAC meeting who addressed their concerns with this, the building and moving everything forward. I own a business on Greenback Lane in this corridor. I don't have a sidewalk in front of my business. I have three parking spaces. Should I have to put the sidewalk and the landscape buffer? I will have no parking spaces except for the one required ADA. I don't think that our businesses that are along this corridor are fit into your, the walkability that they want. No one's walking to Kidwell's Glass to get their windshield replaced. No one's walking to Marco Muffler. People aren't walking to the businesses that are here. We don't have a coffee shop. I mean, yes, we have a Dairy Queen that actually has an open permit for a drive-thru. So he's not asking for everyone to walk to his business either. So I just think that this is not a fit. It's not rural like what we want in Orangevale. And I definitely would recommend your denial on this. Most of us businesses have been here for over 30 years. So that picture that you got that looks like downtown Santa Rosa is definitely not how Orangevale's going to look. Kidwell's Glass is never going to be two stories. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cliff Wiley.
How are you? I'm a business owner in Orangeville and also developer. We're developing a shopping mall in Orangeville, which we're hoping to revive, I can't say the word, revitalize Orangeville. All I'm asking is to be realistic. The pictures that they show there are about as realistic as me winning the Powerball.
Now, if you win...
I might get three numbers if I'm lucky. They're realistic. So I'm just asking to work with us on realistic. A few years ago, Home Depot wanted to move to Orangeville. Everybody said, "We don't want you here." It's a mom-and-pop type of business type thing. Everyone's wanting to grow their business. I'm building a very nice shopping center, and I'm working with gloves. Say, "How do you want me, how do you want it to look?" Other businesses are taking notice. Down the street, we're going to be developing another center. The first center we're developing is retail and warehousing. The second one I'm developing will be warehousing, or restaurants and that type of deal. In that area, let's make it look that way. Let's have the seating areas, look at the walkie, so they can walk back and forth. In the warehousing area, you don't need that because people don't walk back and forth. So I'm just asking, when they, when they, when they came to us saying, "This is what we want it to look like," give us something realistic. That's all I'm asking for.
Well, we appreciate hearing, or I do, that you're going to be investing more in downtown, or maybe you don't want to call it downtown, but in Orangevale.
Here's what I find happening, is other business owners are taking heed of what we're doing. We've got the biggest lot now. We're going, we're developing, we're developing some nice shopping centers, some warehouse space. We're taking out Breakmasters. We're going to be putting in a coffee shop. So it's going to be a real nice area there. The other business owners are saying, "You know what? We want to fix our buildings up too." But if you don't have something realistic, the think, that the people that don't have the funds to build, to make their buildings look like our brand-new buildings, it's going to hinder them. So then you're going to have, like we have now, we have one shop down the street that just paid their building green. Not green, watermelon green. You have a real nice shopping center next to that. So let's, let's get a good plan where everybody can take, everybody, everybody can take a piece of it and everybody succeed. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. And the final person signed up to speak is Catherine Leonard.
Good morning, Board. I'm Catherine Leonard. I am Chair of Glove. As you know, this is a community-led endeavor. Keep in mind that some of the Orangevale community has the fear of the past with Sacramento County, which is why Roberta and Orangevale wanted this to be a community-led endeavor. This process is not about the past anymore. It is about what we can do now and in the future to improve downtown Orangevale. We need the street concept to do this. Working with the DOT this time was a lot better than it was in the past when we did the sign, the identification signs. Glove Streetscape Committee has been held every Friday morning for months. Not everyone could attend all the meetings. We all are volunteers. We also hold monthly night meetings and notice the larger glove distribution list to keep the group at-large updated. Streetscape's goal is to beautify and provide safety and pedestrian and bike access. Goal of the community, including Glove, CPAC, and Department of Transportation, is to have a conceptual Streetscape Master Plan that supports an economic, thriving business district. Provide street improvement that will consolidate driveways where necessary and possible and place the medians to beautify and slow traffic, but to consider placement so that the access will not be blocked to certain businesses, as an example, Greenback Rents. The plan is essential, what was presented at the September community meeting. November 19, Glove Subcommittee meant to review the Streetscape and make suggested changes. I ask that you approve the amendment to the SPA and the attached design guidelines and Streetscape Master Plan.
Thank you. I'd like to ask staff to, because we've heard some concerns expressed from business owners in Orangevale, small businesses, and I greatly respect what you do. You are Orangevale. And this whole process was generated from within the community, and that's where we'd like it to finish. So if someone on the staff could address the issue that was raised, that if you have, if you already have a business in Orangevale within this area and you're concerned about the appearance of future, of renderings that would be many years in the future, but what does this adoption of this mean to you if you're an existing business today? Do you have to do anything?
Hi, Carrie Blaskowski again, from Planning and Environmental Review. Actually, no, you don't have to do anything. In fact, I think part of the reason that this all came about and the community wanted something done was, nothing was being done in this area. And so this is something that we hope to have the idea, vision in place so that when possible, we can start to get grants to start putting some of these improvements in. But you do not have to put in these improvements unless you're going to improve your property prior to getting any grants.
So you're, you're not required, it doesn't require you, for example, to install a sidewalk in, in front of your existing business?
If you're not making any improvements to your business, if it's not a major renovation, if it's not new development, no.
Okay.
And I would just, I would just jump in and say, the current SPA requires this big 50-foot setback with also a sidewalk. So if you're doing a major improvement, under the current situation, you may be required to do improvements. And we're trying to make it better in this area, recognizing that there are shallow lots that the 50-foot setback in this particular area would probably not be good for a lot of the businesses.
So you want to make it easier?
Right.
And then better.
And less, less expensive.
And less restrictive, yes. But still beautify.
Thank you. Mr. Natale.
Yeah, just, maybe just, for example, because Mr. Wiley spoke here and talked about a couple of properties that he's going to be, you know, either redeveloping or developing. So given, for example, on, you're going to not to single them out, but he spoke about his properties, his interest obviously in seeing some flexibility. So I'm curious, could you use an example of his property? Maybe tell us where that's at and how that would either be affected and/or would, you know, work in unison or parallel with what was before us today? So...
Well, for one, he's going to be doing some major redevelopment. So he would have to, if this SPA is adopted, he would have the opportunity, if he was going to develop prior to having any grants in place that would fund the Streetscape improvements, he would have to make those improvements. However, they are less restrictive than the existing 50-foot required setback and meandering bifurcated sidewalks.
Okay, so it's a current county code, either SPA and or county code would dictate if, again, under those circumstances, if we did adopt this amendment today, he would have much more, well, greater utilization of setback, not available to him, but actually, he would be placed, he'd have a 50-foot setback off of the, could, maybe somebody bring up a picture so we could see? Again, we're kind of talking in abstracts here, but maybe that photograph that either you or Heather had up there showing the street and give us an example?
And maybe speak to what, because I don't think we have a rendering, but of what would kind of be the in-between.
Yeah, right, right. That'd be helpful.
I don't know that we have a rendering of that.
Maybe, I guess I'd like to see you go to that photo, that photo you were looking at.
That one?
No, go to, go to, right there, yeah.
Yeah, that's today.
Yeah, today, but kind of give an example, you know, use one of those properties, again, it may not be Mr. Wiley's that we're talking about here, but so what would be required, if you can point out, take either side of that street and say, yeah, if somebody came in to redevelop or develop on a, it looks like there's some big setbacks there on the north side, so...
Ron Vaccari actually would like to address this.
Okay, Ron.
Ron, can you do it from the podium, please?
If you have a pointer, kind of walk us through it. I don't know if you have a pointer or not, but it would be useful. That won't show on the screen, but it'll show up there.
By the way, for a point of reference, is that the, is that the boardwalk?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
So as Carrie mentioned, from an SPA perspective, currently today, there is a 50-foot setback, and that's being reduced by 25 feet. In addition to, because along this process through the outreach, we've heard these concerns. And in addition to what Carrie mentioned, also within the right-of-way of the roadway itself, the current standard, we've tried to reduce, to minimize the right-of-way take. We've reduced the landscape strip that separates the vehicular traffic from the pedestrians. It's currently eight feet, which is designed to allow a large tree canopy to shade the pedestrians. We've reduced it to six feet, which is the minimum to be able to still provide a nice canopy for pedestrians and provide the friendly environment, but reduce the right-of-way take that would, that would, would need to be part of it. So currently, as the standard exists today in 2009, I think we're the, I think some of the concerns that come up is that although our standards had, were approved in 2009 and we have a new standard, oftentimes when we build a roadway project, you're unable to put that standard within existing conditions. And so there's oftentimes in some of the quarters, currently Fair Oaks Boulevard, for instance, and other quarters in construction, where there's areas where we can obtain the standard in this high level of pedestrian friendliness, complete street where bikes, peds, transit. And then there's areas where we have to maybe go from a separated sidewalk back to an attached sidewalk by a particular parcel. In order to not, you know, have such large impacts. And that's, that's common in every project we do. So what I think is clear is that this is a, this should be presented as a vision. It takes many, many years to develop. We certainly, a lot of the funding that comes about for these projects, projects are competitive, so we try to get the best project possible. We try to maximize the benefit to the community in every, in every area we can, but there's always those parcels that if you look, this particular view may not fit exactly. We may not be able to work that out with a public project.
Ron, can I, is asking, go back to the photo, please. I don't want to look at this one. This is, I want to ask you a question about...
One more.
There, okay.
Yes.
Again, you know, my question is though, so today, if somebody came in before, if we weren't to adopt the SPA, just use it for example, and not pick anybody's businesses here, but I want, if you could point out, you know, where, if they had to do an improvement, where the sidewalk and what the setback would be? And then now, to the point, which you're saying you're reducing that, that... And then now to the point, which you're saying you're reducing that, that, you know, how that would fit in the framework here, because what you're saying is that the current county standard would be much more obtrusive and intrusive, I guess, and Mr. Wiley doing some new development, but for anybody else that came in that had approval that would trigger a sidewalk or some frontage improvement. So how would that work here? If you could just point that out, that would be useful and helpful, at least my view.
So on the south side of the roadway that you see in the photograph, the buildings are closer to the roadway. So that's probably the most extreme case, so I'll use that as.
And where's the right-of, tell us where the right-of-way is again. I know it's tough, but just, you know, where is existing right-of-way or future right-of-way here?
So the current standard, if you were to build, or the standard that's been in place has not changed since 2009, would require you to, the two lanes that would be approximately 12 feet width, so you'd have 24 feet, which I'm guessing is about where you see the color change in the pavement.
Okay.
That's where the two 12-foot lanes would be. You would be required to put in a separated sidewalk at this time and a landscape separation. That's the current standard. It would be an eight-foot separation between the, current, today, since 2009, it would be eight-foot landscape strip and an eight-foot sidewalk, because this is a pedestrian district. The master plan is asking you to reduce that by two feet. So it would be two foot less, it'd be a six-foot separation as opposed to eight feet. Now, obviously, you can see that you'd go from that, the back of walk and a current 50-foot setback requirement.
In the middle of some of those buildings.
You're into the, you're into the buildings. And of course, I don't know the dimension there, but you can tell by the photograph you're in. But the current, the master plan that we're in front of you today, and this is a planning topic, but is reducing that setback from 50 feet to 25 feet.
So if you're worried about parking, you're actually, through this plan, going to get two more feet in your parking area than what is required now?
As far as the street cross-section is concerned, that's correct.
And 27 feet of usable area.
In other words, you won't have that 50-foot.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Landscape setback.
That's what I'm trying to get to. I mean, it's hard, so I'm trying, because, you know, whatever people's views are, I mean, I respect those, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what is before us today, you know, beyond the pretty pictures, that's all, you know, what people's vision is. But what does it mean to Mr. Wiley or to anybody else, to Kidwells or Marco or anybody else that, you know, would come in on their property today or tomorrow? So this would be, provide some level of relief, and people can disagree with the vision about palm trees or what ought to be where, the center median and so forth, but this actually then frees up to the point about parking and the usability of their, frontage of their property, still has a requirement for curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
But not a meandering.
Not a meandering one.
Sidewalk. Under the current regulations or standards, it would be a meandering sidewalk, correct?
That is.
Which is, again, more costly, because there's more concrete to.
The current standard for the roadway would be, would require a separated straight sidewalk. However, there is an SPA in existence.
That's what I'm speaking to.
That does require a meandering sidewalk. That's correct.
So for a new, for a newly developed piece of property, you know, they have a little more flexibility, but for these frontages here, these buildings, if somebody wanted to do an upgrade that triggered a street improvement, either under current circumstance or under what we're adopting today, could eliminate parking in the front potentially. You might have a drive aisle, but I mean, I don't know how close those buildings are. Even with a 25, even with a six and six and a 25, that's, if I'm doing the math right, that's 37 feet in back of the travel lane?
Yes. So, so when we were going to build a project, we would look at trying to maximize the benefit, as I mentioned. However, so we work with the property owners to figure out how we can obtain a high standard, provide pedestrian connectivity, and reduce the impacts to their property. The advantage from a property owner perspective of working at that time with the county is that if we can, we can come to an agreement that meets the standard that they can live within, then those public improvements are built as part of the project.
Okay, so you're looking at deferred. Are you looking at deferred agreements then? Because again, you know, you're looking for going for grants, but people might come in, if you trigger the level of interest, and it sounds like there's some level of interest already, and again, I can, you know, supervise my class and her office and all the community members that worked on this. So you get this level of enthusiasm and people, you know, either investment or reinvestment in their property, but it comes in advance of having grants. So now there may be, you know, SECOG money or other, you know, monies that are available, you know, walkable streets money and so forth, but that may be a year, two, or three off, but somebody wants to do something today. So you would take a deferred agreement? Or you consider doing that so that somebody wouldn't get, so you're not going to have along the stretch, all of a sudden sidewalk pop up, and you've got this, you know, existing, you know, Streetscape that on either side of it basically has pavement or gravel or whatever. So you would, you work to have a uniform approach, say block to block, from chestnut to walnut or what? I mean, I'm trying to get some understanding.
Okay, so I gave you the two examples I can think of to make this clear. What I was speaking of, and my example was, we have $5 million, we have money, we have $5 million to do a particular segment that we've been awarded a grant.
Okay.
We go to this property owner, we're going to build the project, and we recognize that there are some impacts. We start to work with the property owner. If we can build something, you know, really close to the standard and without huge impacts to the property owner, then those improvements will be built to the standard with the public project. We have that funded. So we would build those improvements. The benefit to the property owner is that those improvements are now in and in a location consistent with where the vision is of the corridor. And if he does redevelop in the future, the cost is not going to be there. It's already been built as part of a public project. If we have, and now the second example that you had mentioned is also the case. If there is, in the county, we do have deferred street improvement. So if, in fact, someone came in on Greenback Lane or on one of the other corridors that we know.
Use Mr. Wiley as an example.
Yeah, use Mr. Wiley. So Mr. Wiley comes in, and he is working with the planning department. Mr. Wiley comes in and he's going to build these frontage improvements. That is the, that is the optimum time for deferred street agreement, meaning we may take cash and lieu if he's got to build them today, because we have a planned project. We know we're going to, we're going to come in there. We may do that. I will tell you that Mr. Wiley, as an example, could really benefit if, in fact, we were able to be successful on a grant and get those improvements and built. That would be the best-case scenario. But I think, just as we did from a planning perspective with Mr. Wiley, he's been able, knowing that these projects are moving forward, he's been able to be aware that the reduction in setback requirements. I do want to point out one thing to make this clear, is that from Mr. Wiley's perspective, he's building a lot of new buildings. And so it allows him to really capture a lot of the things that we're trying to do here. Where a lot of the cases come up is when you're not, you're trying to make an existing building.
Right.
And that's where the difficulties come in. More difficulties come into play.
If I might jump in on that point, there is a provision in the SPA, both the existing and the future SPA, for when there's very small, shallow parcels, that they do not have to follow the standards to the T. So if someone came in on a parcel that's less than 10,000 square feet and has less than 150 feet in depth measured from the ultimate right-of-way, through the design review process, we would work with that property owner, because we do want them to have parking and other things. And we would, through the design review process, modify the standards for those parcels.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions by board members or comments? Still learning this. Okay, thank you. Then I will move ahead with this. I want to thank, first thank everyone who's participated in this process for the last 10 years, especially Catherine Leonard, who has been, for much of that time, been very involved in the effort, if not chairing it. The many businesses in Orangevale that have participated, and the hundreds of meetings and the public, the community meetings, the meetings with businesses, the meetings with community groups and service clubs. This truly is a grassroots effort that was never directed in any particular direction by the county, other than a desire to facilitate the process and work with the community toward a vision that came from within the community. And no one wants businesses to succeed in Orangevale more than I do. You know, I'm, I hear the concerns that have been raised this morning. I think, I'm not dismissing them, but I think that, that those concerns will turn out not to be, trying to think of the way I want to say it, that, that what you fear might happen is not what's going to happen, and in fact, you will have more flexibility and reduce costs under this plan than under the current zoning and planning documents that have been adopted for Orangevale in the past, that weren't always done with, with so much community involvement. I am disappointed that these concerns weren't raised sooner at, again, one of the innumerable meetings, at the, as recently as last fall, the two community meetings, at, at the CPAC and at the Planning Commission, and that I'm hearing them for the first time this morning when, after 10 years, this item comes to the Board of Supervisors. I'm really excited to work with the community to move ahead with actual physical projects and grants that will help with this effort. This summer, the, that section of Greenback Lane is going to be completely repaved with a grant that was obtained through SECOG. And my office has also put, I don't know the exact dollar amount anymore, but it's over $100,000, if not more, of neighborhood, District Four neighborhood funds into this effort, both the planning effort, and I'm looking forward to investing more in some median improvements as part of that road project this summer. But in order to do that, we need to adopt this SPA. So recognizing the concerns and not dismissing them that were raised this morning, but I'm going to go ahead and move the item.
Second.
Any other discussion? Then please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who came and participated.
For the record, I also wanted to make sure that we did not need to adopt the MMRP document, because those mitigation measures were incorporated into the SPA document. So when it comes to moving the staff recommendations, that, that recommendation is not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
For that clarification. Ready for the next item?
Item number 35 will be the County Executive Comments.
Mr. Hudson.
Thank you very much. I'll step to the center podium for this final presentation to you. I want to, first of all, thank this board for allowing me to serve as your county executive for the last several years. It's been my privilege and honor to serve the residents of this county, and I have enjoyed it immensely. I've enjoyed your engagement and interaction. I think you've heard me say before, wow, this is a board that actually reads the two feet of material we give you on occasion. And that is not always the case throughout the state, and I have enjoyed or informed and sometimes spirited dialogue on many of these matters. We're a very fortunate county, where the elected department heads, DA, sheriff, assessor, are part of the team. They work collaboratively. We are so fortunate. I have worked in and I have read about counties where elected departmental leadership don't like to play with everybody else on the team. You are very fortunate. I have been fortunate to be associated with these elected leaders as well. With respect to our employees and managers and executives, I don't think you could find a better group anywhere. As a leader, you always think, well, if I had this part, or I could change this director out, we would be able to do more. I can tell you, there's not a single piece I would change right now on your executive leadership team. It's a great team. I'm very proud of them. And all you have to look at is the accomplishment over the last several years to figure out why. Whether it be our leadership in technology and sustainability. Wiley recognized as the most decorated county in the state. Whether it be addressing critical public safety issues through realignment. You can see a level of collaboration there that would have been hard to imagine five, six, seven years ago. Whether it be working collaboratively on homeless issues, healthcare, CPS, infant death, municipal services, public safety, I mean, you can go around the table in virtually all those areas. Services have been enhanced, collaboration has increased. And maybe the key piece of that is the sheriff coming here a couple of years ago and telling you, please don't give my department any more money right now. I'm very worried about the probation department. I've never heard of that before. I've never seen it. I've only run through about five or six sheriffs in my career, so maybe there's one out there, but I haven't encountered another one yet. But I think that, that single statement epitomizes the kind of cooperation that you see amongst these departments, and I have been truly blessed to be a part of it. I know that the deeds and efforts of these departments of this county will only expand from here, and I thank you for letting me be a small part of it.
And don't leave the podium yet.
Is now the time to make remarks? Are you going to make a presentation? I guess you're making a presentation now.
Yes.
Didn't want to make remarks. I hope I get something that's a little bit better than the pin set that Supervisor Cerner received.
Oh, no, that's what we had.
Get you a fishing hat.
It was a different name on it, of course, but, yeah, this was a little too large for me to put behind my chair this morning. So we do have this small gift for you on behalf of the county. Well, I think you should, yes.
That is really.
I can, I can hold onto it here.
That's a good trick.
It's a portrait of all of us, man.
Well, how nice is that?
Sure, it was quite this large.
There we go. It is big. Very nice. There you go. It is the Red Rabbit.
Jumping down the bunny hole.
Yep.
And I, since that terminal opened shortly after you joined us, it's probably a good bookend. I just did want to add that, you know, I think this county is a very different organization than it was when you first came here, and you highlighted some of that, and just wanted to express the, our appreciation for your four and a half years of service to us, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And this would be the time for any other comments from board members.
I'll go first. I just wanted to say, Brad, thank you for several things. I think you've been just invaluable to the unincorporated area. Your skills from your previous job as a city manager really helped me and the county staff members focus on the appropriate services for the unincorporated area and gave us direction on new ways to attack blight and other things. I mean, from driving around the county in the middle of the night, you know, looking at. at junk in the right-of-way and problem homes and all kinds of other things. And I will be forever grateful for that. I also am grateful for the, the budgeting skills that you displayed to help this county emerge from the dark, depressing recession. I think you really helped us, lead, lead us out of there to a place where we can now grow at a, at a good pace. I agree with you on many of the people that you, or all the people you hired. I think many were just, you know, terrific appointments, and I'm, I feel really confident that the staff you appointed will also help carry us forward in a positive manner. And one of my favorite things is your cheerful attitude. I could always hear you about a half a corridor away as you were coming into the board chambers, and I never heard grumping about things. It was always really a very positive attitude, glass half-full, I guess, is that, is what they say. And I think that will, that attitude and all your skills will carry, carry you forward in your new job with, very well. And I wish you well and thank you for all your years here at the county.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Ms. Turner-Tolliver.
Well, Brad certainly wanted to express gratitude and appreciation for, for all your efforts. Certainly, the role you've served in here as county executive is not an easy one. Certainly, you know, working with the five of us, you can be complimentary in your comments, but you know that that's a difficult task, just, in fact, the personalities and certainly the interests that we come together individually, but collectively at this dais, you know, hopefully reflect the thoughts and, you know, attitudes and concerns of a million and a half people in this county. And I think that your understanding of that, certainly the, the interest that you had in, in coming to this community, and certainly, I think, you know, hopefully leaving it better than, than, you know, than you found it relative to certainly our budget, as Susan referenced, but some of the other initiatives that I think you brought, brought about through certainly the collective efforts of folks that have, you know, worked with you and, under you. But I think the, one of the hallmarks that I will always remember, I think, is certainly the energy and initiative that you brought. And sometimes you pedal that bike too fast, but nonetheless, because I think your, your interest in, you know, bringing about change and what you saw as to be, you know, positive impacts, you know, in whatever aspect of the community life. And I think this county, not only with its board of supervisors, but certainly with the elected, as elected as you mentioned, and certainly our department heads, it's a big place. You know, I mean, it's big geographically, it's some of the areas that you've served in, but it's, it's, it's big in its, I think, daily demands and needs. It's, it has a big heart, and I think it has a lot of capacity to, you know, to change and to evolve, you know, in, in positive ways, but also to work on the, you know, maintaining the neighborhoods and the business districts and the community areas, you know, whether they be rural or suburban or urban, you know, new and, and old. And I think the skill set that you brought to that, the energy, and I think the initiative of, again, will be hallmarks of, of your work here. And I've appreciated the opportunity to work with you, certainly have always found you to be a very engaging and, and willing to, you know, to, to, to work hard on, you know, a whole variety of issues and spend many hours in these chambers. And, you know, at times, I haven't always agreed, but certainly have, you know, certainly respected your willingness to go back and working with folks to, to the drawing board at times, because I know you're one that likes to bring things with the, you know, looking at your gift there, to have the, you know, the, the package with all the bows and ribbons tied to it. And sometimes it hasn't been that easy, but I think it's certainly reflective of, of work that you've, you know, taken great pride and interest in, and I appreciate that commitment. And I want to wish you well, you and your family well, whatever your, you know, new endeavors are and will be. And again, thank you for your service to the people of this community, and Godspeed to you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Any other comments? Mr. Kennedy.
Yes, just a few things. Having been here for a year, however, 19 months in preparation before, I mean, seven months before that, I want a couple of things. First of all, point out that coming from a different environment that I came from, it was refreshing to go through, not only sitting up here, but in the audience last year, the budget process. And I think that, I hope that the board members up here realize how smoothly our budget process goes. If not, I welcome you to sit in on school board meetings. And I, I don't think that's by accident, and I think that you deserve a lot of credit for that because it's the listening that you do the 12 months beforehand, listening to the board's priorities, listening to, you know, what is important to the various districts and understanding that, and bringing forth a budget that is billions of dollars. And even though it's only hundreds of millions of dollars of discretion, that's a lot of money which could be haggled over and fought over, and, but it's that listening that makes, made our budget processes go so smoothly, and I give you a lot of credit for that. On a personal note, on behalf of District Two, you have been a tremendous support in understanding the needs of South Sacramento, which are immense, particularly the code issues, the crime issues, and provided the resources that we need to try to turn that area around. And you've been there every step of the way, every time I've asked for some help down there, you've been there, and I really appreciate that. Again, on a more personal note, that seven months that I talked about, you made it possible for me to join this board and really start, if not running, walking quickly. And, you know, were a tremendous resource to me and incoming staff to really be able to represent District Two on January 5th. And I really appreciate all the help that you did to me personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Okay, anyone else?
I just wanted to note, as far as technology advancements, that he's even got this supervisor using 311, so I would just tell you.
Oh, my gosh.
To your, to your, to your credit.
I'm glad to hear that. Are you using the mobile app? Yes?
No, not that far, yeah.
Okay, well, that's next.
Anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on any other item from supervisors this morning?
I just had an adjournment. Get there.
Yes. Anyone, any other comments before the adjournment? Then go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am chair. I would just ask that we today adjourn in memory of former county employee, county director of finance, John Joseph Dark, who passed away a few weeks ago on December 10th, where he resided, most recently in Hawaii. He was 80 years of age, but was a former US Air Force officer and following a distinguished career as a US Army paratrooper and serviced in the United States Air Force for 21 years during the Vietnam era. He retired as a major in 1976 and went to work at that time for the city of Woodland from 1976 to 1983, and then came to Sacramento County in 1983 where he starred as the chief deputy auto controller. He proceeded through a variety of roles, including serving as this county's treasurer, tax collector, accounting clerk, and recorder, and ultimately the director of finance from 1997 until his retirement in 1999. John had a very engaging personality, and I know it was noted, again, kind of on a personal note, a humorous note, that people found him oftentimes to be very charming. He was very knowledgeable about the work that he was engaged in. But always, it was pointed out that he was, people found him to be a very good listener, even in situations with crowds and so forth. And it was noted that he would turn his left ear to you, where he had a hearing impairment, and that he could, for many minutes and if not longer, people found him to be an amazing listener when he may not have been listening very much at all. But nonetheless, he was a person, again, if you've met him in the hallways or certainly out and about or even in these chambers, again, knew, knew his information, knew it well, and did a good job in working with his staff and keeping the finances of this county in good order. It was also noted, and again, on a personal note, that he was a wonderful cook, loved the time in the kitchen, but was very involved in the caring and rearing of his children during their younger years. And that he had high standards and certainly brought discipline to his own daily life of that. He tried to instill that in his, in his youngsters as well. He survived by his wife, Wanda Dark. Wanda was a former county employee as well. His sons, John Kevin Dark of Missouri, John Eric Dark and Chris Dark, as well as grandchildren, John Michael and Catherine Dark of Walnut Creek, and Angelique and Veronica Dark of Woodland, California. And so it is with a great deal of sympathy that we extend to the Dark family, our condolences, but also ask for that we adjourn in memory of John Dark today.
Okay, thank you. Then the board will adjourn in memory of John Dark, and then we will go to closed session.